All right, welcome to our January 13th Board meeting. Oh, look at that, still living like it was 2024. Big number one tonight, that's it. We'll go back. All right, first off, we're gonna go ahead and have Marley, who's our amazing student representative for our school board. She's gonna share a couple of things that we've been doing at school.
Okay. Is there a slide for it or am I just?
Yeah, there is.
Yep. Musical celebration. So we had, I don't remember what grades, I know middle school didn't participate. So K through fifth. We had a musical play from the students. Okay, it was, uh, Rumps of a Ringing Hound, I think it was. It was very fun to watch and just have all the kids sing. That was amazing. So I'm really glad how that went and stuff. And we have a semi-formal snowball coming up for middle school dance. I think it's this Friday. That is gonna, that was created by the leadership, uh, leadership students. So I got to like get a sneak peek of that and I know it's gonna be great. And so we're just hoping to see how that will go and all the decorations. And I think that does spend a lot.
Scott has a two-week break, right? So we'll get Monday off. It's exciting to. Thank you, Marley. My report this month is very short because it's mainly about budget. So I did wanna share with you guys a couple of the upcoming events. So our STAR assessment window did open up today. It was super exciting for that. So definitely for our students to show the progress that they've made. And we'll have a report for our STAR results comparing our fall scores with our winter scores at the February Board meeting. Tomorrow night, we also have the High School Fair. The original we had planned it, so that was our regularly scheduled Board meeting night. So if you guys could come to the High School Fair, check out some of the high schools, and then we could go right to the Board meeting. But we had to do it tonight, so that's okay. If you still wanna come tomorrow between five and six, never too late to start thinking about high school for students. We like to have all students be able to get an idea since we do have high schools of choice. Marley mentioned the snowball on the 17th, which is Friday. January 20th, we have no school because of an observance of Dr. Martin. Dr. Martin is your King Junior Day. And we have a band and choir concert at 6:00 PM on the 23rd. So that's coming up next Thursday, which we're excited about that. Be able to see our band and our choir perform. So those are our middle-level students. And then on the 31st, we have our Pride Assembly, which is always a great experience for our students and our staff. So those are some of the highlights of some things that are upcoming within the next work for this month of school. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn over to Christine, and then I'll come back in just a moment.
Yep, I kept mine, my report short this evening as well. So we only tend to talk about the budget. I did wanna say tonight that you may have seen some news on Power School breach. On the, it was on the news across the country. And I just wanted to let everybody know that our senior system and network administrators investigating with the support of Power School and the team from Power School. So I have something to report tonight. We do have a letter that I sent today to our legal team. They, we were advised to have our legal team look at the letter before it goes out. So as soon as I get that thumbs up from that team, it'll go out to the community. So that is student information and staff information potentially. So we don't know how much impact it has for yet. Just the timeline review. I wanted to share this publicly so that everybody knows voting day is March 4. Our meeting, the budget meeting, is March 1st at 10:00 AM. And we will post the warning by the 27th in all the places we need to post it. And board members up, proceed. Our Anne Marie Redman Marks spot is up and Debs up as well. And in your packet, you have the second quarter financials. And I just wanted to briefly look at those with you. There are no surprises. You look at expenditures, we're on track. We overspent contracted services by a small amount and travel by a small amount. The other lines are well within where we expect them to be. And we have not received all our projected revenue. So that's why you see the difference, but it's not surprising at this point here. So no worries about that. We'll look back to Ryan, who's gonna start us off. A little budget information, and then Larry's gonna take over.
All right, so our budget this year has been quite a challenge. I appreciate our VAC that has been able to advise us on what we're doing. Thank you, Christian. Megan, I think August is online as well. So thank you to everybody and also to Ryan for helping us out with that. We appreciate all of our budget advisor council members. One of the things that we really focused on this year for the budget was we kept things at the status quo as possible. It was really important to do that because everything is costing more money these days. And we wanted to try to keep the cost relatively low as possible. And so the only changes that are in there are changes that are basically out of our control. So staff negotiated contracts is up. Obviously, health and welfare benefits are up across the country. High school tuition fees are always up and down. It's been on the high school costs because all the high schools are customers. More money to send their kids. And then also our extra assessments. So those are the main drivers of our budget and what it is going to cost us this year. I'm gonna go ahead and turn over to Larry. Budget book's been up there online, the link's been there. It's been great, it's a nice new tool to really show us what it is all about on it.
All right, so now I'm gonna walk through the tax rate and how it's calculated. So bear with me for a minute because it gets pretty annoying. So the top line is the expenditures, that's 8.96. That's what's in the budget book. So you start there, and then if there's any offsetting revenues, Weatherfield does not have any offsetting revenues. The only district in our SU that has offsetting revenues is Mount Scudney because of high school tuition, as Brian alluded to. So you carry that number forward. The LTW ADM, that 566.36 is hot off the press. That is the final number, we're told is the final number from the state, the fourth version. So we take that number and divide it by the 8.96, and that's how you get the net education spending per LTW ADM, which is $15,821.34. So the state is saying with that budget, you're spending $15,821 for LTW ADM, which is how they define a student. Exclusions from spending, excess spending calculation. Weatherfield is allowed to exclude their bond payment from the excess spending calculation per LTW ADM. They're allowed to exclude that, that's $254,000. Subtracting that out on a per LTWM basis, it brings you to about $15,371. The estimated excess spending threshold is $15,926. Your $15,821 that you saw earlier is lower than $15,926, so you are under the excess spending threshold. Any dollar amount over that $15,926 would be taxed one to one, right? So if you spent $1 over that, if you spent $50,927, you get $2 via the general fund, the education fund in Vermont. So because you're under, there is no penalty. Now, homestead yields is set by the state in the December 1st Tax Commissioner Letter at $8,553. You take that $15,821 divided by $8,553, and you get an equalized homestead tax rate of $1.8498. Then you subtract the discount that was passed last year by the state of Vermont under Act 84. One of the complaints when they changed the law last year, after they passed the law, was to kind of provide a glide path to this new LTW ADM system. So about 15 to 20 districts in the state got a discount. Mount Scudney was one and Weatherfield was one. So you get a 4 cent discount. That $1.84 minus 4 cents is $1.80, 54. So that is your discounted equalized homestead tax rate. Then you apply it to the CLA, which is 89.43, and you end up with a homestead tax rate after CLA of $2.188 for Weatherfield, and a non-homestead tax rate of $2.27. The non-homestead tax rate is the rate set by the state, which is about $79 multiplied by your CLA. Next slide, yeah. So now, to show you what that looks like as comparison, now that you know how we arrived at the tax rate, this is estimates. Last year's, or this year's tax rate is a buck eighty, and next year would be $2.01 estimated, the difference being 21 cents or 11.7% difference. It was 11.8% this morning, but you got extra LTW ADM, it dropped to 11.7. And because the 11.7%, you know, what does that mean to you? Now, the board, well, you wanna? So now the board asks to have options, and the VAC looked at for reducing that tax rate.
Do you wanna do that, Christian?
Sure. So first of all, I wanted to thank, the Budget Advisory Committee wanted to thank Larry, DJ, and Brian for their work in helping us understand the process, and especially education funding in Vermont, as complicated as that can be. Secondly, we wanted to recognize the quality of education that our students, we feel, receive here at Weatherfield Elementary School. Couple things that we noticed in the budget book in terms of enrollment trends. Weatherfield was the only school that gained students since 2020. A net 13 student gain. Every other school in the district has lost students in the district. District-wide is down 25 students in that period. So we felt like it was important to recognize that our school is growing, and that's a good thing. It does mean we have to pick up a greater share of the district assessment, but it also helps us from a state perspective in a larger school population. We also wanted to recognize that there's enormous pressure on school budgets right now, and budgets in general. And we wanted to see as little increase as possible. So we all, we looked over these alternatives that Brian and the staff presented and really discussed each one and how they would impact the education of our students here at Weatherfield Elementary School. While we felt it was important to reduce the burden as much as we could on taxpayers, we did not want to impact the students' educational experience to reduce the budget by the levels represented in C and D, but we felt it would reduce the teacher ratio to student, teacher-to-student ratio and significantly impact the educational experience. So it was our recommendation that we go with budget B, or the recommendations in B, that 11.1 tax increase. This results in about a half a percent decrease in the budget, so not a lot. I think Larry can show it, it was about $12.
I'll show that in the next slide.
Okay, great, thank you, I'll let you explain that.
After they see these.
While not a lot of money, we felt it was important to show that we were doing our best to curtail costs for this school. So our recommendation was the 11.1. And I don't know, August or Megan, if they wanted to weigh in, but that's where we came out.
Hey, I thought what Christian said, I think Larry will get into it. When you look at the overall spend and what we can't avoid, it's a minimal increase for what we can. And so these areas are really important. But again, around that 11.1, while it is a raise, we're avoiding the impact to students. That's where we felt had the best thing for Vermont.
And to give, to outline better what it means for a homeowner. The next slide will show each of those options. As-is would be no changes to what's in the budget book. Option A is the next column, that's what Christian was outlining. Option B was that middle column from the previous slide, and option C was the far right. So if you have a $250,000 house, option A would be $502, tax increase annually versus a $440, $439 under option B. So that's, you know, 60 bucks over the period of a year.
Can we go back and see what the cuts were again and just go over those? So what, what would all those mean?
So repairs and maintenance would be any of our effects. We would be cutting back our budgets significantly on repairs and maintenance. So we'd have to really tighten up to make sure that what we have is working and try not to let things break and be preemptive like we have been doing. I think we've been very physically responsible for the most part on that. Maintenance supplies would be cutting back basic supplies that our custodial staff and our students need, keep the school clean. Night custodian, we would be reducing. We have a night custodian that focuses on the upstairs from the end of the school. So that would be the person that would be gone. Athletic supplies, we would decrease those by 5,000. Classroom supplies by 5,000, office of the principal by 1,000. Four Winds, which is a program that is done within the school day by volunteers, but we do pay an organizational fee for that. To do it, it'd be $3,000, and then cutting the library budget by 1,000. And then if we wanna go to a more extreme, then we would, we have two SEIs right now, social-emotional interventions. One is locally funded, one is funded by the SU. So we'd obviously cut the one that would be funded by us, which would be about $56,000 right now. And then we do have one left, one educator that is left that is locally funded, that would be $53,000, almost $54,000. And then if we went to the total extreme right now, we do have some amazing brand-new teachers. And right now, the lowest person on the totem pole would be that $54,450. So if we did all those reductions, the most we would do is 2,000, where we also look at the possibility it's up to $56,000. So obviously, like Christian said, the further we go to the right, the more impact we have on the classrooms. The left one's still gonna have an impact on students, an impact on the school, but it won't be directly in the classroom. But it's still gonna impact. Everything hurts because it's just, I mean, it's tight. And we're, we've cut the fluff and we're just seeing as hard as we can.
Is now a good time to go over questions that we have about the budget?
Sure, absolutely. If I could really quickly just go back to the tax board meeting, because Brian brought this up in the last VAC meeting, and I think it's according to the offsetting revenues. Obviously, Mount Scudney would have high school tuition. Another offsetting revenue you've been using lately, if you've had previous year surpluses, year after year, now would be an offsetting revenue. This year, 24, Christine reported in October, you guys didn't end with a surplus. So there is no offsetting revenue. So you're starting down essentially because you've got the benefit of it last year. So just wanna make sure everybody's clear about that. Yeah.
So I've had a question. What is retirement local? Not a huge savings, I'm just curious as to why it went up 100%.
Yeah, so $6,000. So retirement local is a portion that we pay based on teachers' contracts for visitors, but it's locally funded. So we pay certain people when they got in to the teacher's contract. It goes up. So it's based on actuals, and then I add a little bit to it. So I don't know if you've had a retirement in the last year or so.
We did, we have one last year and we have.
So there's, it's not a big dollar amount, but it's a percentage, it's a big amount. And it's based on when we did the 20, when I did the 25 budget, he's using 23 numbers, when I'm doing this, I'm gonna do 24. And that's what we have for retirement local. It's based on when they got into the pension program.
Okay. And then another thing that I noticed, the SU assessment. I thought our increase was gonna be $291,000. That's what we had discussed at our November meeting and sort of reaffirmed at the December meeting. But here in the budget, it says $352,000.
Yeah, let me double-check that. But I believe what that is, is, the 291 you might be referring to might be special act. So that, so it's not everything. That's taking all the SU assessments that Weatherfield pays, and I'll confirm that right now. That's in the budget book under the SU. Yeah, so if I add those two together. What did you say?
$291,317 was what we had at our November meeting.
Had the increase?
Yeah.
Yeah. 352?
It's $291,317. What's the total?
What's the one yours?
The one now in the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, 352.88. Or $888. It's like $60,000 difference.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So you know what that is? That's food service and ECP. So when you were looking at the general fund in the budget book, the general fund is one fund, and then the next one underneath the budget book, if you keep going, is early childhood and then food service, which are broken out in separate funds, because they have to be. So that's correct.
Did anyone else have any questions about the budget?
I have some questions like, can you define what facilities and district safety expenses are?
Facilities and district safety is?
More so district safety.
It's, we have to use the Vermont uniform charge accounts. So is that under accounts? Where are you seeing that?
It's under expenditures by accounting summary.
Okay. So that's basically building the ground, that's building the ground. It's what we call, we call it building the ground.
Right.
But the state makes us call it facilities and district safety.
Okay. I think we're good. Okay. And there's a, I probably would have picked up on this a few years ago, but what is our actual short-term debt that we're carrying?
So short-term debt is almost always, in your case, the tax anticipation notes.
Right, okay.
That we do, because we don't get the first payment like August or September from the town. So it's a key payroll.
Yep. And can somebody, so we're talking about electricity. I'm curious for everyone to understand. Anyone else have this solar system works here? How the credits, if we get any, why do we have expenses for solar system, you know, for the solar power that's generated here at the school? Generally?
So usually what?
Something thousand dollars.
Is how much?
Maybe 3,000 or more a month.
Yeah, so.
I'm just curious, like, we're not getting anything back from this system, but we're paying out.
And we're getting a discount, I believe. We get a discount on our, I'm trying to remember, it was a couple of years ago that we voted on this, but it's like a.
So we're paying the solar company, is that just for the equipment, like we saw it dead?
No, we don't own the equipment. We're paying for our electricity at a discounted rate.
Yep.
Yes.
So we're leasing the equipment.
Yeah, and you are, you're getting credits as a discount rate. It's like if you're gonna have the solar system, your electricity would be more.
Right.
But we let them put the stuff on our.
I could dig to find out how much more if there was no solar.
Right.
They own it, we're not leasing it or anything. We're just getting the electricity from it at a discounted rate.
So we're gonna get an electric bill, it's discounted, but we're paying the solar company, well, we are. I definitely see it.
Yes, so.
We're paying the solar company for what?
Yeah.
I mean, for the electricity, right? We're paying them for the electricity, but not for the.
I can look at, I'm sure, yeah. I can look at. There's bills, there's, we pile up.
Yeah, Norwich Solar? Is that the one you?
I don't remember, I think so.
Norwich Solar, it's needed the installation.
Norwich Solar's the company that I work with. So I can look into the exact breakout.
I believe there is something like, it's probably a couple of years still away, but they had mentioned something about the possibility of us buying the equipment at a certain point, once it's depreciated and it's no longer of value to the shareholders that bought it or cash credits.
I think we should all know what are we getting for value out of this system?
I seem to recall it was like an 11% discount, but I don't quote on that. It's just, I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
Okay. So the net metering agreement contract is as of 2022, right? So I came on around that time. So the net metering agreement was contracted for 25 years with options for renewal periods. The amount school pays, it's not specified, but will always be 85% of the value it receives. The school is paying 85 cents on the dollar. As the cost of power goes up, the credits the school receives will go up. But that's the discount that Anne Marie's pocketed. So it's, the payment varies. So the first-year monthly payment was set at $3,000, and this year's monthly payment as of 2022 has been revised down to 2,700. Like my personal solar system in my house, I still pay monthly.
Right.
And, but I get monthly credits. We don't get credits, we just get a discounted rate at the school.
So basically 15% off.
Basically, yes.
So what, that $3,000 that's in that line is our payment?
As of 2022, last year. As of 2021, 2022, it was 2,700. I could look and see what it is this year. When you sign the bill.
It's close to that.
Close to 2,700.
Yeah.
Then that's Norwich Solar.
Sarah?
Larry, is this under utility services? Is that the line? Under expenditures by account?
No, I don't believe so. Utility services is very low, I don't think that's it. It's probably either electricity or other purchase service. And I could find out, I could run a vendor check on Norwich Solar by what line it comes out of.
Okay. Well, I'm just noticing that the utility services jumped from 2,024 to 7,000 for the projected. So I just was wondering if it was that or what is utility services?
I can look into that.
And I had a question about student transportation purchased from other sources. Like, other than our bus company, where are we? Do we have like drivers for students or what? What is that in this? At the local level? So.
In the local budget, it's 14,000.
$1,400.
At 2,260.
Other source budget.
Is that like our bus for the, is that our bus for the algebra kids or?
No, that wouldn't be, that's not. I can look that up.
Rentals of equipment and vehicles. So equipment, I understand, but what would it be, we'd be renting a vehicle for? Anyone know?
Might just be how we have to build it.
Yeah, yeah. We spent $720 in '24. Equipment and vehicles, so. I think when this Woody, then Brian do some stuff that he had to rent, you know?
Like a Rebo truck or something.
Yeah, because we bought our tractor.
Yeah.
You know, a few years ago. I don't know, I can't think of. Rent the dumpster, because I wouldn't be vehicles or equipment. Could be, could be equipment. So I would think that would be in the trash.
Do we know how that's going with the 2025 budget? Like, is it, do we need?
201.
1,500 with budgets or 25?
Yeah, how much have we spent?
I can look that up.
Utility services, yes. Other space and.
Yeah, I was like, oh, but that one.
Yeah. I mean, I guess little stuff has up, yeah. Yeah, it does, but.
It would be rentals of equipment and vehicles. It would be rentals of equipment and vehicles. I have uh, another, other questions about other professional services and then other professional services local. Guessing local is more um you know, some kind of instructor, something like that. And then there's, and then there's essentially the same line item above it, but it doesn't say local for a lot less. Just, I think we should just know what's getting grouped in there. So we're having a good idea, because that's sixty uh, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Well, that would be
Like a accountant or lawyer, something like that. Uh, there's fund transfers. Is that just?
Yeah.
One to another.
Yes.
One account to another.
Yeah, so like last year you did uh, capital reserve, a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, okay. So where is the money that was left in our discretionary or whatever fund that we did have left? I know we gave a lot back to the town, right, against taxes. So we essentially zeroed that out when we took the hundred thousand.
Yeah, we put a hundred thousand back.
There we go. What we did last year, I felt like there was, we left some. Saying there was, is it now?
I can answer that. But, you know, I guess not what I'm
He's saying we used it last year. We used it to buy down the budget last year and they don't have it available. Plus again this year, now it's in the
Yeah.
Now we negative.
No, you're not negative. So
Yeah, that's, sorry, that's, yeah, sorry.
So last year, you had a, this year, I'm sorry. So last year you started with beginning fund balance, the twenty-four, six hundred and forty-eight thousand square. And then you had fiscal year difference, and you had a twenty-four, as Christine outlined at your COVID meeting, of a hundred and seventy thousand. So the assigned fund balance that you're talking about for the tax rate was four hundred and forty-nine thousand. That's for this year. That's why we assigned it.
Right.
So you have leftover in the fund balance. This is in a fiscal year surplus.
Right.
In the fund balance are twenty-eight thousand. That's why you can't offset any revenue towards the tax rate for this next fiscal year. Or put it into capital reserve if the board so choose.
Okay. And this, the, I was confused as I thought this was our capital reserve fund, but this is not our capital. The fund balance that we're talking about.
No, this is the, this is the general fund.
Okay.
Did you want to leave out capital reserves?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, right.
Yeah, I can find out.
Add it to his list.
Would you like to talk?
I'm gonna get a break at the end.
Okay.
Before we move on to another subject.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions from the board as far as the budget goes? Um, do you have any questions that you want to answer or?
Uh, no, some of our questions were just at the district level, but that was already decided, so.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions from the audience here or online? Gary?
Yeah. Uh, so I am under
Three hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Forty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
The facilities and district safety, which is the facilities and maintenance or formal link, that's how we know it?
Yes.
Um, so is that one of them? I don't know, but five hundred and eleven thousand, is that um, all of our custodial staff?
Yes.
So I remember asking um, Larry, you before, this includes our the facilities assistant manager for the SU and a portion of the directors?
Let me find out. There's another facilities and district safety. So I'm just So And then question others, does that include the local? One second.
Okay. Yes, that is included. Other purchase property services.
Okay, so those were uh, Weatherfield, Hayes, Mount of Scotty for a full-time person and a twenty-five percent person?
I don't know the ratios, but it, they pay seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars for the use of the Mount Scotty buildings and grounds and maintenance personnel. So currently that's Jim and Woody, but it could be pirate. It, it, it could be anybody, because it's not, you're not paying out a payroll. So it could be anybody.
Okay, so that's, so that
It's contracted service essentially.
I, I guess my question really is, when would or when was the last time it was considered to put out if someone to provide maybe more hours for a similar amount of money? How does that?
Yes, so
We don't have a full-time facilities person. So I feel like for that dollar amount, we could.
Yeah, so um, a full-time, so the, the, the timeline is years ago. There was Gary Graham, who was the facilities director at Weatherfield. And then he left mid-year or early in the year. I can't remember when exactly it happened. And then uh, the superintendent at the time, the Weatherfield School Board at the time, decided, hey, let's use Mount of Scotty. So we don't have to go out and hire somebody as a facilities director and pay them health insurance and pay them FICA and pay everything else we pay. And let's see if we can do this kind of like as a district, as a district one. And at any time, the Weatherfield School Board would decide to cut the contract and uh, if it's not working for them, they go hire a facilities director for building this size. And everything Jim and Woody do, and you just, you would have that person, he or she, they'd be responsible for maintaining the building and and uh, doing whatever is needs to be done, when the fire alarms go off or the, all the other stuff that's done. And uh, if you can do that for less than seventy-four thousand dollars, all in, that might be a good use of taxpayer money. If you can't, then this might be a good relationship to continue. So that's a board decision, I think, and not my decision.
Um, and then another question I had was projected um almost seventy-two thousand for summer school English?
Yes, that's a great question. So that is, that's, that's secondary English. That's an error in the uniform chart of account. It's second, it's not summer school English. It's secondary English. It's uh no, it's, it's yours, it's your English. It's your English. Your secondary English. Your junior high English, your middle school English. It's an error in the chart of account that they're working on, Vermont.
Oh, okay.
They, they miscode, they miscode summer school. It's not, it's not summer school.
That makes sense.
It's your school year, middle school English.
Two, or now we only have one.
And you're the second person to notice that, so thank you. And my affiliate is working on it.
That's all I got, thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to go back to the question of the maintenance person. On average, how much time do we get per day for any one of those individuals? Just knowing there's a lot of problems here that are very expensive. And what is happening about that?
I know Woody's here every day and uh, I'm not the whole day.
I was gonna say for sharing him, what, what are we, how many hours are we getting for that?
I haven't asked Jim to do a time study, but I can have him do it.
Yeah, I would say five to six hours.
Not that, during the school day.
During the school day.
Yeah.
Other times, you're later and come back.
If there's something leaking, at, at two AM on a Tuesday, it's Jimmy.
And what, for, for those individuals that we have here, what like classifications do they have? Do they have like heating, plumbing, air conditioning? Like what are, what are we getting for licensing from them or experience? I asked the question simply because we are spending a lot of money on HVAC. And it's, I'm not sure if everyone knows that here, but it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year in some places. Um, so I'm thinking, we have these people that we're paying for, are they qualified to manage some of these projects that we're outsourcing to other companies? Do they have electrical licenses, anything like?
I don't believe Jim or Brian have electrical licenses. And I believe, I don't believe they have HVAC. I know uh, Jim has been a maintenance director for twenty-some odd years at Windsor, a much bigger building.
Right.
Um, that is qualified, well-qualified, I would say. But he does not have those certifications. And again
And are they here managing projects when there are issues? Like either one of those people?
Yes, for the most, for the most part, yes.
So when there's a major HVAC dysfunction, they're here managing that problem?
Woody is here when he's the one who makes the call, when there's nothing going on. He usually leaves with the maintenance people.
Okay.
And then goes
Thank you.
Right, that's right.
Right.
And is he here the entire time here? No.
Right.
But he was here initially for the initial call through.
Yep.
Find out about something.
Sarah?
So what exactly is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of HVAC? Like, in, relative to other years? I mean, are we having some serious issues this year or is this the normal bill that we're getting?
I believe it's more serious this year. And I, I don't think it's all HVAC. I think some of it's security. It's literally like the doors.
Right.
They're coming to fix in the fire panel.
Right.
There's other things going on that aren't just HVAC. I want to be clear.
Right.
Uh
I only hold it in on that because that's a huge expense.
And especially this year.
It's blowing the budget out. But doesn't, I don't know if things, are things resolved with that constant onsite contractor? And if they're not, again, are those people we're paying for doing something different, finding somebody else managing the problem? Uh, because that's, that's the nine percent we're looking for right there. Not that we're not gonna have problems all the time, as you know, but, but they seem to be drastic for this size of building. And I talked to you earlier, we, we discussed that. I haven't gotten a call or any information from anybody about those questions.
Yeah, I think I
That's a huge source.
When we talked about, I think it would be, I said it would be a good idea for Jim to go to the board.
Yep.
So I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
We should have Jim report to the board why this year there's a lot of money being spent on that line.
Uh huh. Where is that line?
And, and it's not, well, it's not just this year. This is a consistent expenditure that's large. Um, it just, it took me by surprise. Give me the line number.
Yeah, did I, I read, yeah, that's right. I read, I read the auto report.
Yeah, you gave it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gary? Yeah? May I ask a question? So
Yes. Sophia?
In the budget that we, uh, we're discussing, one of the items we're reducing is facilities and maintenance by five thousand dollars. But we're concerned that make, once we're expending such a huge amount on HVAC and other services. Does it, are we really not saving anything? Or are there other places where we can do maintenance to help us reduce costs and expenses?
Right, we, we should spend a chunk of money on reducing it over, over the, over time, if that's what we need to do. But none of us here have the answer to that real problem. Personally, I just see then the, the band here.
Sarah?
I was gonna say, I think it may be time um, to get a report, maybe from Jim, talk about some of these issues at the board level, just what our plan is. I mean, I agree, you know, we have these people on site. I mean, anybody can call HVAC, anybody can call a plumber, anybody can call electrician. Um, we don't necessarily need somebody managing that if they're not able to fix it. So um, I'm not saying they're not valuable in different ways, but that's a big price tag plus, you know, our share of those salaries. And just to clarify, Larry, because I know this came up last year, that, our assessment from the SU, does that include any part of that?
No, it does not. And that's, and that's why you see it on that line. If buildings and grounds were at the exit level, it would be a bigger number and you'd be twenty-five percent of it, just like you do special one, or just like you do with superintendent's office.
Okay.
But that's correct. They're currently Mount Scotty employees. They are not SU employees.
Okay. I just wanted to, to confirm that again. Okay.
Question?
I'm sorry, I just, Larry, one other question. What was the total in the capital reserve fund? Did you give that?
Three twenty-eight.
Three twenty-eight, forty-three and forty-four cents. Thank you.
So I guess what please the board need to decide?
Close question, yes.
I just make a slight comment.
Yep.
I see that they want to slash the night custodian. I am a night custodian. That's gonna leave me alone in the building at night. Is that what you really want to do, is leave someone all alone for in the evening hours? But I, it's just a safety issue. I'm just asking a question. So I, I just wanted to put it out there. I mean, I don't mind working alone, but to me it's a safety thing.
Well, the other question is, the workload manageable for one person? Is it safe for one person? What if that person gets ill, injured, et cetera? Where do we, where do we, you know, substitute that individual?
Cutting that position was
Not under the eleven. It was not under the eleven percent, it was sort of the nine.
No.
I was trying to keep things as far away from the classroom as possible. We did have that discussion as a PAC. We were concerned about the safety issue of just having one person on site. That definitely came up. And also the plan is for the school with the AC, and did several other schools have said that our school is pretty amazing now and how it's clean, it's safe. But that wasn't a concern. Uh, but I think their role again was to keep it away from the classroom as much as possible. Um, and then when that person like say when Kelly is out sick, then that is where our facilities manager comes back in and helps out and make sure that the school's, you know, ready to go for the next day for students. So there is, that's part of that person's role as well to take over and pretty able to do some of that. Um, but yeah, I mean, we do live in Vermont. Vermont is, stuck on what a pretty safe state, but that was a concern if I just have one person in this building after, you know, seven o'clock at night, or six-thirty and whatever people are there, absolutely. I'm still looking out for your career.
Well, I, I don't mind talking alone. Don't get me wrong, but to me it's a big safety issue.
That was one of my concerns, for sure.
The world doesn't get any better.
No.
We like to think it is, but.
John?
A couple of quick comments as your retired representative is not clear. Um, in the first slide, when you gave the yield number, that was the one that JFO presented in December?
It's, yes.
Okay. From history, that number probably will go up. Um, short term, I don't see the legislature having very many levers to pull to get school spending under any semblance of control other than trying to make that number higher. Um, that doesn't help you at all at March town meeting, because you're gonna present and it's gonna look like an almost a twelve percent, nine percent uh, increase regardless. But I think when the bills, when everything sugar's off in May, you actually see that number. This is just speculation of my This is just speculation on my part, but needless to say, there's this enormous amount of pressure to do something about spending. And for budgets. And I anticipate that probably tonight and many nights for the last two weeks, the next week and a half. Um, all the boards sitting down with the same discussion you're having. And I don't think anybody's out there uh fluffing up their budget to make it look bigger. Uh, like happened last year, uh, which was really unfortunate and created a lot of chaos. But anyway, I. If all goes well, I would anticipate that uh yield number to go up. Um, hopefully by a thousand, but it's still not gonna. It's maybe it could lower your increase by a percent, but probably no more. But people aren't gonna know that until next.
Okay, um. I mean, the main thing for the board to think about is. You know, if. You know, we wanna balance the school, the kids' experience against the taxpayer's experience. You know, do we want to cut things just to get the tax rate down a bit? Uh, or? Do we wanna? Do I see how it'll go? See if the taxpayers will support a budget of twelve, almost twelve percent increase? But I don't know how people are feeling about. I'm feeling like based on what I heard all summer long, that that's not gonna. Not gonna pass. I mean, I can't say for sure, but I wouldn't put any money on it. Twelve percent. Um, of course, our other options aren't that much better and we lose a lot of. Yeah, we definitely, even that, even the least one cuts things that I think would hurt.
Can we go back to the, to that screen?
Can we bring questions?
Yes, yes. Uh, you, you have, you can check. Oh. That's, it's. I'm sorry.
If you.
It's a, it's a you.
Yeah, it's Christine, it says Christine Blom.
A lot, a lot sharing it more.
It's your presentation.
Yeah. Um, well, that's coming up. I have uh utility services is water and septic. Um, transportation from other is athletics and yearly class program. I don't know, yearly class program would be yearly class program?
Over.
Over. Over. There you go. So that DJ rescue. And then the other one was rental. That's uh kidney boats. That's your copier service. So that's a lead, so we have to pay that.
Correct.
Yeah. It's not a vehicle.
Right.
I mean, repairs and maintenance, maintenance supplies.
I, I think respectfully, like the VAC did a good job at putting things in, but I'm wondering if we need to take a quick. Look at some other items outside of the classroom experience that we can. You know, like our overspending of certain HVAC and other small things. I, I wonder if there's some hidden um. expenditures that we're, we're not getting down to the root of, uh, that maybe we can talk about at least. Uh, prior to voting.
Yeah.
Or accepting just for the use.
And, and we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, so we do not have to vote on this tonight. Um, so if we have questions like about the HVAC. That we have not gotten answered, which I don't think we will get answered, the HVAC question tonight.
Correct. Well, I was just asking Larry what we'll charge him for that for next year. I know it sounds like it's an anticipated expense this year.
Or, or has been at least since I've been working.
Can we get, um, can we get some kind of report from Jim and on Wednesday? When we're.
I can, I can reach out to Jim.
I mean, I know it's a short.
And I'm sure unless something is ridiculous, I, I'm sure you'd be here.
Right.
I think it's, it's a little better than the question.
And, and we, we really don't need exact numbers. We just need to know.
Is the problem there?
Yeah. Is, is, is the problem fixed? Is it, is it gonna be a reoccurring thing? What's the status of that expenditure?
I'm just trying to find the line in the budget for that.
It's uh.
Henry, we did not make sure with a wat, something to do with water pressure. Or something, a water pressure holding tank.
Uh huh.
That they had to come in work two days on and then something with the hot water heater.
Uh huh.
And issue had been going on. There's, there were two. Kelly, do you remember what that was when they were down at the boiler level? Those guys were down at stairs in the first. Yeah, water tank, yeah, something, yeah. Something to do with the air pressure or something. It kept getting scared off or something. Yeah, yeah, I don't know what they ended up replacing though. So that was a few, like a two day job. Yeah. And we're here for a while.
So in, in other professional services and local. And um, you budgeted fifty-one thousand five thirty-seven in fiscal year twenty-five. You spent in twenty-four actuals seventy-three thousand two sixty-eight.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
And then we budgeted fifty-one thousand five thirty-seven for this next year. Because when I met with Jim, it went over the budget, he was comfortable with that. Even though you overspent it last year. And I can light that where you are this year. I, that was the other question Anne Marie had.
Yeah, so that's not something that would be a thing that would be available for cutting really?
No, anything.
Already, if anything, it might be more than that.
So, and uh, so I mean.
Yeah, we're looking at fixing probably in this budget, but maybe the next four.
Uh huh.
And I would.
That's two hundred thousand.
Only four years. So elsewhere. The actual expense. We'll get it right now. So. You. You've spent and encumbered, so that's spent also. So you're eight thousand in the red as a pound for that line.
Yeah.
So you're probably online for what you spent last year. So the question, I think to Jim, and I will, we'll try to get him here is. A, what, why are we over budgeted those two years running? And what do you, do you anticipate that to be the problem next year? Or is, are, are things looking up?
Have we finished all the problems or?
Larry, with the mini splits have been in that, these mini splits are new here. Cause when we do capital reserves, you overspend the budget and then the fact that there's a revenue, right? So you don't see it.
Yeah, so uh, one of those mini splits in the last year.
One of those.
Last year, there were one of those two years ago.
I'm just concerned.
Yeah, cause we. Not the service of them, service of them is the service of them.
Right.
But the initial install would have been a capital reserve. It would have been, and it would, I don't think it would have been this line.
Would have been the budget.
And it would have been overspent, right? And then you would see it on the revenue side.
So. I guess are there other areas that you think?
Oh.
Uh, Sarah?
Another thing.
Oh, sorry, hold on.
Sorry. So thirty-two thousand, speaking of what BJ's saying, thirty-two thousand one hundred of this year.
Uh huh.
Is the gym floor.
Oh, that's the services?
So, yeah.
Is other professional services.
So, other professional services local. You guys pay through the gym floor, you got it done.
Okay.
And now we pay out of capital reserve, which is the revenue side. You see that hundred thousand.
Uh huh.
So, but we can't spend out of capital reserve by gap.
Uh huh.
We have to spend out of general fund. So in that sense, you're right online budget wise. Even though you see a lot of controlled technology invoices.
Even though it's only December.
You know, it's only, it's January, sorry. Yeah, but thirty-two thousand is.
So we're still going.
Thirty-two thousand of that, you're eight thousand in the red including that thirty-two thousand, right? So you're not, you're not really in the red. I know it's complicated, but we're not allowed to spend money out of capital reserve. It's, it's, we paid out of general fund and the money is transferred in.
Okay.
Transferred out.
Sarah?
So Larry, just to confirm, if we didn't do any. Cuts, then the increase would be eleven point seven? Is that correct?
Yes, with no cuts, the way, everything we know about the LPW ADM and the tax worksheet you saw. Uh, you would have an eleven point seven percent increase, which if you go to the last slot. That one. Keep going forward. Yes. So with no cuts, you're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar house. It'd be a six hundred and eighty dollar annual tax increase. If you did option A, it'd be saving twenty, thirty dollars ish, thirty-three dollars.
Okay.
And so on.
Um, so there's no hidden money in here that?
I think I got everything, right? Utility services is water and septic, transportation is athletics and.
Over.
What, over and rental equipment is pibbys, which is your coverage. And utility I didn't. Yeah, it's water and septic. They call it utility services. And then the question for Jim is twenty-four, we overspent this year. We're going over spend. We know thirty-two thousand, which is gym four. And what are we, does he anticipate, are things, does he anticipate more controlled technologies? Need more than preventative maintenance?
Right.
Uh, the rest of this year, are things still a problem?
Larry, is that?
Yes.
Sarah?
Another thing I think just. You know, to note again as a reminder, maybe people haven't heard a couple of things are, you know, that just kill us every time is. You know, the health insurance increase. Twenty, what are we talking Larry this year? Twenty-three percent?
Eleven point nine, eleven point nine percent.
Eleven point nine.
I thought it was.
I thought it was twenty-something.
I thought the health insurance, no, it's seven, here it says seventeen point five four.
So the health insurance premiums have gone up eleven point nine percent.
Okay.
But we're facing, the increase is based on twenty-five today and what we anticipate for next year. So if somebody, for example, like if uh somebody left. And became a third grade teacher and now they have a family plan, it would be significantly more. So that's where the seventy percent comes, because we're taking the numbers.
Uh huh.
It's not just the, the premium increase alone, it's eleven point nine percent.
Okay, still there's our eleven percent and um. You know, if you look at it, that, I mean, we have no control over that and that's a huge increase. I mean, that's, that's all of our increase basically. Um, if you didn't, if you didn't count anything else and our, our little school is growing. I mean, we have a larger piece of the pie for our assessment. Um, a significant increase. Um, just some things to think about.
Um. You know how you made me that chart last year? Here, mail make me a chart like that again. This one?
Yeah.
Cause I'd like to.
Yeah, just keep adding onto it. Got it. Yeah, I can do that. That's a good chart. Alright, so I'll, I'll email it to you. I'll add it to the board. I'll add it to the ledger.
Cause I think it's important to show people just how much the CLA really affects the number.
Yeah. And you.
I mean, we were looking at what a seven percent increase and then when the CLA was applied to it, it suddenly became this eleven point seven.
Throughout, and that's interesting too, because throughout, we're in version four of the LPW ADM and Weatherfield did not move much. It was basically a CLA as far as the, as the changes came about.
Uh huh.
The LPW ADM was pretty flat, you know, good, it was up, but it was.
Uh huh.
Was a big change from version one. The only one that changed along was Harlan.
But the CLA changed.
The CLA did change and uh Weatherfield and Harland are the only towns without appraisal. Windsor and Westminster just had appraisals.
Yeah.
So they're in the.
We're due for one in twenty twenty-six.
So, yeah, a little.
Got at least one more budget probably.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea uh for the waiting phase two, what effect it's gonna have on Weatherfield?
The waiting phase two on LPW ADM?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. I haven't heard about any changes to the way.
Well, it was a five-year process.
Yeah.
Now we're in phase eight.
Yeah, well, that's the four, the four cents that we have off, yeah.
So yeah, so it's a four cent discount for Weatherfield and a five cent discount for Mount Scudney and no discount for Harland.
And, and we had a, we had a five cent discount last year.
You had a five cent discount.
Each year it'll go down by a cent. So we had a four cent discount this year. Next year it'll be a three cent discount.
That's correct. Oh boy.
I have a question. So last, last year, I think Kelly was talking about that rainy day fund, the thing where you put money that we use all the.
Um, that's it. Are you talking about the capital reserves fund?
No, it was a different one. Do you remember Kelly?
Oh, I think we ended up not doing it.
I think it's all gone now.
It's gone. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Yeah.
I was looking for his name.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We never opened that.
We didn't open it, yeah. We ended up using it to.
Yeah.
Opps that.
And the state is really um. They don't want to see as many tax stabilization funds.
Yeah.
As other towns have. And they're coming after that money and we don't have one, but other business managers, they do. They have. It's not capital reserve. It's like eight hundred thousand dollars just sitting there for tough tax years. And um, and I think that's just a product of over budgeting, just like how you don't want huge surpluses. Right? It's the same thing. You're taking the money either way. So a tax stabilization fund, the company does not want to see those.
Um. I mean, I, I'd like some time to think about it and. I guess if you guys, if anybody comes up with any great ideas of more creative ways to save money, I'll get.
Uh, yes, I, I just wanted to um, uh, circle, circle back around and I want to commend um. Brian Martez on, on just an amazing job um, leading our school. And I really, a, a, as a father of a student in school, um, I, I know all that these decisions are very tough decisions. Um, I did want to say uh, from a fiscal standpoint, the budget advisories committee's recommendation. Was the proposed list B, uh, was the list of cuts. Um, I think it's a balance. It's a balance be, between what we know is gonna be a high property tax bill, no matter what. But at the same token, um, compromising uh, to show that we are trying to uh, be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. So I, I just advocate uh, for that recommendation for, for B. Thank you.
Thank you.
And B, just to clarify, is the eleven.
The eleven point one. Okay, um. So is everybody in agreement that we'll table this until Wednesday and. You guys keep looking for sweet ways to cut. It don't affect anything.
Yes, I'm gonna work. I'm gonna call you. Um, I mean, I'm gonna.
And that meeting is at six thirty and it's online on like.
It has to have.
Oh.
One person here because um, the law changed unless it's an emergency.
Oh.
That's if you're here. So I'm gonna be in Harland at six and I'll join remotely as soon as they're done. And Larry will be here at six remotely.
We're moving into Harland.
So none of you have to come out. Larry and I will handle that.
No, we hope that the other one will be quick.
Okay.
So you can remind us.
Okay, um, so I guess we'll move on from the budget.
And you'll send to them.
Yeah.
We have a curriculum update. This is Sarah Mark. Are you ready tonight?
Sarah, did you have anything prepared or?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought she said Sarah, but all I heard was Mark, so I. Just confirm. So back in uh, right before Thanksgiving, Mark and I met with some teachers. So back in, uh, right before Thanksgiving, Mark and I met with some teachers, um, we didn't have as big of a, um, group that joined us, but, um, of course they always kind of send notes along with the others. Um, so I just wanted, I had, you know, told them that we would stay on top of the new curriculum discussion and that I would check in with them periodically. Um, from their concerns last year, uh, with our new curriculum when it rolled out. So this was kind of our first check-in with them, um, to the start of this school year. Um, I mean, I think Mark would agree that the consensus is, um, they're feeling a little more comfortable making the adjustments that they need to. Um, with obviously staying within lines of, you know, what they need to teach and, um, what is expected. But they do feel, um, you know, that, that, that pressure has, um, kind of receded a little bit. Um, there's a few, I guess my biggest concern, um, is still just the trainings with it. Um, you know, my questions, I went in and I said, what, you know, how's the support, how's the training going? Cause I knew, you know, that was a big thing last year. They felt like they didn't have a lot of training coming out of the gate. Um, so that's still kind of just meh. Um, really, um, a lot of the in-service days necessarily aren't focused directly on, um, the new curriculum. So, you know, look ahead, you know, to you Christine to see, you know, how we can better that for them. Um, and just make sure that we are meeting those. I mean, I, I have Angie's, you know, notes from, you know, the implementation and how she wanted to kind of roll out and keep checking back ends. But we're still looking for, you know, um, just some lesson guidance, um, the whole summer scope review. Um, just gathering feedback and, and the priority of that, um, is still sounds like, um, that it's missing. So, um, we just want to kind of stay on top of that. There's still some materials issues. Um, a lot of them said, you know, either they have too much of something and then others don't have what they need. So, um, I don't know if we can look at a way to kind of streamline that, um, to make sure that we're using the materials, you know, appropriately. Um, we don't want to be wasteful, but we obviously don't want people to be without. Um, so I, and I don't know enough about how that's distributed, but it sounds like it's a little bit all over the place. So, um, that was a concern still. Um, and then, you know, because they're adjusting and, you know, then they hear that the other districts are adjusting. Um, my concern, just because I know we always get the data, um, and we do, that's how we kind of measure. Um, I know that's one of our board's goals is to measure data because it's the only tangible thing we really have. Um, so, you know, how can we support them for better scores, but also is the star data going to be? You know, across, across the S U, if everyone's kind of adjusting and doing a little bit differently with the same curriculum, how will we really gauge all the data? So that was a concern, um, you know, from the board level. Um, and what else? Um, mental health is still a concern. Um, I mean, this kind of piggybacks off of one of the scenarios of cutting. Um, I am not for cutting any S E I or in fact, I think we need more mental health in the building. But, um, that was another concern that the teachers brought up. I know that's not necessarily curriculum directed, but it is, you know, a teacher's, one of their top issues is making sure we're supporting students' mental health. Um, because we all know that's going to affect their academics. So, um, and I know, I know most of the training has been planned already for the year. So maybe you can speak to that Christine about, um, maybe curriculum specific, especially at the certain grade levels. What may be coming up to make sure that, um, everyone is included? Do you have any?
Um, for, for this year, um, I think we've got a day, I know we have a day coming up in February. And that is the day that we look at the data, the teachers, uh, grade level teachers have their data and they, um, adjust their, their, their classroom goals. So I know that, that, that time is taken. Time is a huge, um, concern for professional development. We certainly don't have enough of it, but I can tell you that we are reconvening the, it used to be called the differentiated professional learning committee. And, um, that committee met regularly for a couple of years to try to help flush out what the professional development stands for the year with B. And when Brittany left, that went away because she, she was the keeper of that. And I have asked Angie to reconvene that she has put out, um, notice to the staff and has people that are interested in serving on that committee, which will help us flush out the professional development for next year. Um, some of the professional development needs are, are, are put on us by A O A to be, to be quite honest with you. Um, next year, I know we're looking at some proficiency work. Um, we've been focused on the high school this year. My, my plan is to move down to at least the middle level, maybe the fourth or eighth grade level. And there's gonna have to be a focus on the literacy law in K three, our teachers are gonna have to be trained in, um, the assessment that we've chosen to administer, which is, uh, DIBL's assessment. So they all have to be trained in that. Recommended to be trained in scientific reading. So we are surveying staff to see who has had what training, um, already or not. And that all has to get worked into the plan. Um, I think, Sarah, I hear you on the, on the data piece. We're not doing similar things. And units are getting, uh, eliminated or not, that will impact our data. So grade level teams should be working together to determine that. So spoken sequence have been given them some, some latitude in that. Our teachers know best, what can meet their kids' needs. But they, as far as I understand it, they are working across the S U or they have worked across the S U and grade level teams to determine that. So they should be doing similar things at each grade level. Um, but I will definitely, um, you know, especially with Angie on that. I don't think they've had a ton of time to meet since the beginning, since the summer and the beginning of the year. Um, but going forward, I hear you and I brought that on my, on my list. The other thing I wanted to say is the materials issue, um, was, uh, an issue. Concern. This, uh, this past fall, we tried to get orders in and items, materials distributed before school started. That didn't happen. Um, we have a meeting on the books, uh, I think in two weeks, the curriculum team myself to make a plan for, how we can get better at making sure we're surveying the staff to see what they need, so they're not ordering additional, um, resources, which is wasteful. And have a plan for doing that, um, effectively and efficiently, so that everybody has a thing before school begins. I will say, one of the frustrating pieces that I've heard, um, I believe it's Amplify. We do have digital.
Yes, that was, that was my next thing to ask you about, if that could be on radar, is the Amplify. Some of them don't have, still don't have the digital access.
Okay.
So again, they could get materials that they need through, if they had the access, which is really like a tech issue. Um, so I said that I would, you know, advocate for that to ma, get their logins or whatever they need fixed. So that, um, specifically, I know, um, some of the special education educators, they are literally making their own, like, workup because they are not able to still access the Amplify digital access. So again, that's an issue. Um, they should not have to do all the extra work when it's there. Um, so they said it's, they, it's helpful and they like the digital access through Amplify, but some of them are not able to access it still. So.
Was it, was it classroom teachers here or was it mainly special educators? Do you know?
Um, one of the ones that spoke was a special education, um, teacher. Yeah.
Okay.
I think the, you know, regular grade teachers, um, have the access.
Okay.
For the most part. I didn't, again, it was a smaller group this time, but that was one of the, the bigger issues.
Okay, yeah, I'll put that on my list. I know, I know, um, what I've heard is that some teachers don't want to use the actual, um, you know, the student workbooks that come printed in print. Um, you know, as a pass first grade teacher, it's sometimes easier just to print what the kids need and not have a big book in front of them to try to find the page. But the company requires us to purchase those. So even though, so if there are extra materials, some of it is because some teachers opt not to use the, the, um, the actual workbooks and just the digital resources that they can go to do that. So it's a combination, but yeah, that is definitely on my list to, um, get better for next year.
Mark has a comment?
Christine, there's no reason not to share what it is, the two items you and I discussed as far as curriculum.
No, I do.
Okay, alright, um, so ju, just to clarify, there was, uh, when the last curriculum policy vote, uh, came up at the S U, uh, two of your, uh, reps from this board voted nay, one of them voted yay, and that was me. Um, and then we were just reading this policy differently. So one of the things that I've asked, uh, Christine to do is to add in a part to that policy, uh, clarifying Brian's role in terms of, uh, the procedures and, and how things, uh, how the curriculum is, uh, implemented really, um, just to have it clearly in writing. That way there's no ambiguity there whatsoever. Um, and then the other thing is to establish a policy for, or procedure for rollout, um, of new curriculum. So just to have a basic guideline, what, what process will be followed before we attempt to institute or implement a, a brand new curriculum? So that's something that Christine is working on and Sarah, you, you were not a part of that discussion, so this is just for the board.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
And I know we talked about that, um, that just briefly, Mark, how, um, and I know, and I, and I know time is an issue. Um, there's only so many hours in a day, only so many, you know, school weeks in the year. Um, but we talked about, and maybe Brian could weigh in on this because to me it piggybacks what Mark just said. But, you know, yes, there's district or S U wide, you know, expectations, like when they have these trainings or whatever, or when they're not having these trainings. But what we can do in-house in our own school, um, to train our teachers, um, you know, maybe that's something that we kind of take a hold of, you know, or that we look into just like within our school. If teachers are feeling like they need more, um, maybe that's something that Brian can work with, you know, to execute. That was like a suggestion.
Yeah, we've got some plans in, in mind, Sarah. So I'll share that with you later.
Yep.
Okay, um, we're gonna move regionalization discussion to next month, since we're getting a little late here. Um, and we'll go on to the land use recap. Any have a visitor? Okay, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Ryan Gumbert. I'm the land use administrator for the town and I'm representing the planning commission. Um, the planning commission is tasked with, uh, updating and adopting or, or sending to the select board for adoption, the town plan, which was last adopted in twenty seventeen, so it's coming up for re-adoption, um, this March. And they've been working through a variety of the chapters and one of the chapters that's, the state statute, um, requires having a chapter on education facilities in town. And so we started looking at it and there's a lot of language, um, that is sort of dated. It says that a new law about, um, pre-K and things, just sort of small tweaks like that we went through. But the, one of the first statements that says is, um, the existing educational facilities in Weatherfield are considered adequate to serve the community's anticipated needs over the next ten years. And so our first question is that, sure, when we, the, the planning commission isn't really as in touching, connected with, with the education system. And so we wanted to, um, use this as an opportunity to collaborate and have you review what's in the town plan, which is, it's, it's fairly minimal. It's kind of an inventory of what facilities and opportunities are, are available. Um, but it's also a good, uh, chance for the school to put in some, some things about what they're planning or, or goals that they have for facilities. I know one of the things it talks about is, um, safe routes to school and pedestrian, biking, biking, uh, facilities and things like that. Um, so it's a good way to get that in the town plan, um, which can then be referenced for grant applications and things like that down the road. Um, we work with the highway department and they didn't have a whole lot of specific things that, you know, they have their, their plans, but it doesn't all need to be covered in the town plan. Um, but it is a good place for them to say, one of our goals is, um, improving or maintaining good water quality with our stream crossings on our roads. So they have a statement in there, um, that they can say, cause they, they do apply for a lot of grants and one of the questions is often, is it, is it a goal of your town plan? And so, um, that's, that's basically what I have and I'll send you out, um, a copy of what's, what's in there now.
You did send us one.
Okay, great.
I forwarded it to the rest of the board.
Um, so if you have comments or anything you want to share, we could go over that now or you could let me know in the future.
I do have some comments and I don't expect you guys to have all the answers tonight. Um, but if you could get back to him with, with the answer to that ten-year question that he has. Um, also, uh, in the paragraph that begins preschool children in Weatherfield, um, it says fifty Weatherfield families were served by S A P C C in twenty, in twenty thirteen. I was thinking that should probably be updated. We probably have, could have a more. Uh, update. It's not, it's not over ten years.
I think our facility, maybe besides age back system is prepared for the next ten years. But I mean, I can take a look at those if it's insurance.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I'd like to get that updated. Um, then, uh, there's a paragraph about high school education and, um, that was pretty easy. Or, well, um, some of it's, we can just find right from the new budget. Um, cause right now they're using numbers from twenty twenty, twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. Um, and also there's a line in there that's not quite right. It says, but the school district is responsible for paying the statewide average tuition cost. Which that's only true for, um.
Like K U A.
Yeah, that's only true for like private schools. Um, we have to pay when we send somebody to Woodstock, for instance, or to Windsor or Springfield. We pay whatever.
Whenever they send it to them. In Woodstock's case, if it's over, uh, or as they see, they undercharge it, you just got it in pushing twenty-four thousand this year from, for last year because it was over three percent. So they go back.
So that line isn't quite right. I'm not sure exactly how you would word it, but that's, that line isn't true. Um, uh, and then I thought, and then in, and then it says twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, you could update that to twenty, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. We had a hundred students that attended fourteen other public and private high schools, because they're not all in Vermont. We have kids going to school in New Hampshire or Massachusetts, um. And then, and then that's, I didn't do the math, but, um, the tuition rates vary from neighboring school districts by over forty percent. Uh, is that close to being correct or?
I mean, in Springfield's case, I don't know if it's forty percent, but it's close to forty. But again, we have, if they're announced tuition's twenty-two thousand, it's probably closer. Last year, last year that would've been untrue. This year it might be true.
Um, so maybe that figure could stay in. Um, and then there's a paragraph, the total K through twelve student population of the town has declined since the mid nineties. Um, when it averaged between, uh, four twenty-five to four fifty students. Um, there's been a slight raise in twenty-ten to twenty-eleven. I just think that should be updated because those numbers are quite different now. I mean, we, we're down from, from the nineties, but we're up from this, this kind of low point in twenty-ten. Um, we're back up to around four hundred students, correct?
I don't, uh, not four hundred, not including high school, but.
Well, this is K through twelve.
Yeah, so K through twelve, including high school, so three fifty, three fifty.
Three fifty.
So.
Henry, can I just reiterate something?
Yeah.
Uh, Jim and I worked on that together and it's coming with the administrator at the time.
Uh-huh.
So I think Brian should be working on this, let the board and have Ryan come visit us or something like that.
Okay.
So, uh, I just remembered doing this official draft of this.
Okay, so you guys can work on it and figure out what needs to be updated.
Yeah, you guys have questions on it. I haven't, I didn't.
I don't have any questions. I just sort of wanted to point out some things that I thought should be updated.
Um, if you feel comfortable doing that.
Yeah, uh, we can, we can work on between DJs.
Yeah, uh, we can, we can work on it between DJ and I.
Yeah.
We can send it back to you next couple of days.
Yeah, great. Yeah, all the stats are good because the other purpose that it serves is basically educating our residents about, um, what is the status of things and how they change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just, I just think there's some updating that needs to be done, but other than that, and you guys can work it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so we already talked about that we're going to have that additional budget meeting on Wednesday. Um. And that's on the district website and everything. If anyone wants to attend, I'll also be posting it on Facebook. Um. We just want some time to kind of think about it and to make a sound decision. Um. Let's do, uh, we do need an executive session, correct, Brian?
Right, to go over the contracts.
Patch for contracts.
Uh, things three thirteen.
And three thirteen A. You got that.
We can go into the.
Okay, yeah. Um. We have, uh, let's set the next agenda. So that'll be.
That would be in February.
February.
Just pull it up. February eleventh at six thirty. Hi, Bud. And, um, it'll be discussing the town meeting presentation.
Well, yep.
Um, you mentioned there'll be STAR results February. And we'll do Mark's regionalization.
Yep.
Presentation. Notes, regionalization notes from his, from meeting.
That's what your report.
That's what I reported, yeah.
Okay. That's what I have made in my computer side, from my memory.
So, um, anyone have anything else that you would like on next month's agenda? Okay, all right, I will take a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, my gosh.
Vincent made the motion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
Let me hit record.
Yep, I did.
And we are in. We are in session. Okay, we're in session.
Okay. All right, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Vincent made the motion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Good night, everybody.